And for roll call, we have in-person Commissioner Frivos and conference call-in, we have Commissioners Butler and Wishman. Jake Sweetin, the attorney, is also on the conference call as well. Let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. Alright, so on tonight's agenda, if you guys would review the agenda and then I need a motion to accept the agenda. A motion to accept the agenda. Thank you, Commissioner Frivos. Do we have a second?
(Inaudible) second to motion.
Commissioner Wishman seconds the motion. And all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Commissioner Butler? Thank you. Awesome. Agenda is approved. Go ahead and review the approval of the minutes for October 5th. And then we will need a motion to accept those as well.
(Inaudible) approve the minutes from the October meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Wishman. We need a second.
All second.
Commissioner Frivos, seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Fantastic. Minutes are approved for October 5th. So on our agenda tonight, we have two public hearings. The first one is going to be for rezone 20-001. And then we also have a public hearing for special use permit 20-003. So we will go ahead and start with the rezone, RZ 20-001. At this time, we will go ahead and have Brian come up and tell us a little bit about this rezone.
Tonight we have rezone application of .997 acres from an R1 single-family residential to a C commercial. The applicant is Veritas Holdings LLC, P.O. Box 1548, Inglewood, 83616. The owner is the same. The subject property is 1420 Judo Lane, which is located in Section 18, Township 6 North, Range West, Placid Marina, Gem County, Idaho. Parcel number is RP 06N 01W 180085. So we'll do an application summary in the background. The applicant, Veritas Holdings LLC, on property in their ownership, are requesting approval of a rezone application on a parcel totaling approximately .997 plus or minus acres from R1 single-family residential to C commercial. There is one structure, a shop with unfinished living quarters on the parcel. The applicant application states the intended use of the property is for light manufacturing with a companion application for a special use permit to allow an accessory use of the residential inside the existing structure. The structure was originally designed as a shop with living quarters for a single-family residential use, which is currently the allowed use. Comprehensive plan future land uses, the parcel falls within the mixed plan development designation of the 2007 future land use map of the comprehensive plan. Staff recommendation, as further described below, staff finds that the rezone application meets the goals of the comprehensive plan for a rezone to C commercial with a special use permit for living quarters inside the existing structure contingent on the approval of the rezone. So we're going to jump forward now to Section 5, which is the comprehensive plan policies and goals. Before the city of Emmett can approve a rezone application, it must determine that the proposed zone, C commercial, complies with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and future land use map. The zoning commission and city council must review both the future land use map and the text of the plan to see if the proposed zoning matches the vision described in the plan. Staff has copied pertinent sections of the comprehensive plan and provided an analysis of each one. The subject parcel is designated on the future land use map as mixed plan development. In Chapter 12, the joint comprehensive plan defines this land use category as follows: These areas are unique in that they are accessible by archerials and/or rail lines and/or the airport. These areas are greatly affected by contiguous industrial, residential, and commercial land uses. In order that compatible land uses and sufficient and efficient uses of the land might occur, these lands are anticipated for a variety of planned compatible mixed uses. Probable mixed uses for these areas could be commercial, multifamily residential, open space uses as a means to buffer highway noise, light industrial, office, public, and related land uses. Single-family uses are only allowed through the special use permit process. The vision of these mixed use areas is to allow commercial and light industrial uses without requiring a special use permit in order to facilitate and streamline business expansion and development. The C zone allows for light manufacturing uses and is the most compatible land use designation for the mixed plan development land use designation in reference to the surrounding land uses. In the commercial zone, single-family residential is allowed with an SUP. No heavy industrial uses are allowed in the C zone. In addition to the map designations above, the joint comprehensive plan includes the following policies which generally support this application. Chapter 12, Land Use 12.25, encourage new industrial development to occur within the mixed plan development or industrial areas and throughout the county where industrial development potentially exists. While the requested rezone is for commercial zoning designation, the property use will be for light manufacturing. Chapter 12, Land Use 12.28, support new commercial uses near residential areas in such a way as to complement but not conflict with those residential areas. Business creation is partially dependent upon having available land zone for commercial uses. If approved, this application will increase the supply of commercial zone land thereby supporting increased business creation in the valley. Chapter 12, Land Use 12.36, the development of a variety of compatible land uses should be provided in specific plans and proposals for future development. The application provides a variety of compatible land uses by adding the commercial zone land for light manufacturing use and a special use permit application for residential living in conjunction with the intended use of the structure. Land Use, Chapter 12.30, encourage commercial infill uses and offices to locate in the central business district, business parks, shopping centers, and near high-intensity activity areas within Lea, Beth, Sweet, Olaf, Montour, and Emmett. This property is located near State Highway 16 and John's Avenue. Both are high-intensity activity areas. Economic Development, Chapter 4.1.2, support business retention, expansion, and creation. Assist businesses with the tools and encouragement that will enable them to succeed. This is the creation of a new business in the Gem community. Economic Development, Chapter 4.1.4, promote job creation to meet the employment needs of a growing workforce, therefore reducing the need for residents to commute outside of the community for employment. Ensure that needed infrastructure is provided for new and expanding businesses. The business will bring employment options to the community which helps for youth traffic on the highway system as well as new residents that will add to the local tax base. Economic Development, Chapter 4.1.6, the community should solicit economic activities that maintain and increase the community's fiscal stability by providing high-quality development opportunities which export goods and services. This high-quality light manufacturing use will provide tax revenue and will export goods made in our community. Economic Development, Chapter 4.1.7, reserve and designate sufficient land to fulfill the community's industrial and commercial needs. Approving this rezone would add approximately 1 acre of land to Emmett's C commercial zoning district, thereby helping to fulfill the city's commercial needs by supplying more land for commercial businesses. Number 6, Zoning Ordinance. A zoning schedule of use control. Emmett City Code 9-5-B2 lists permitted and special uses in the commercial zoning district. Emmett City Code 952-C designates permitted uses within the C zone. Light manufacturing is permitted outright in the commercial zone. B, Purpose Statement of the Zone. Emmett City Code 932-C lists the purpose of the C zone as follows: To accommodate and encourage further expansion and renewal in the store or retail business and highway corridor areas of the community. C, Emmett City Code 963, Official Height and Area Regulation, gives the area and lot standards within the proposed C zone. The main difference between the R1 existing zone and the C commercial zone is the maximum building height and the minimum lot area within each district. The R1 zone allows buildings up to 35 feet in height versus 60 feet in the commercial zone. The minimum lot area in the R1 zone is 6,000 square feet while the C zone does not have a minimum lot size. Any allowed commercial use can be constructed so long as it complies with International Building Code and International Fire Code requirements. Number 7, Required Findings and Staff Analysis. Emmett City Code 9-15-4, transmitted to commission, outlines the process of findings for review and approval of zoning amendment application, which is what a rezone applications are classified under. Section B requires a commission find that the request is in accordance with the adopted comprehensive plan. This is the only standard in the zoning ordinance by which a commission must evaluate the rezone request. Staff's analysis of relevant comprehensive plan policy is provided above. The commission and council must find the comprehensive plan map and policies to support the rezone application. And number 8, Staff Recommendation. Staff can support the rezone application from R1 single-family residential to C commercial due to proposed rezones conforming to the basic content of the comprehensive plan policies and future land use map. Staff finds relocation and compliance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map to be the key considerations that do support a change for this parcel. The commission must rely upon any additional testimony provided during the public hearing when making its recommendation to the city council.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for Mr. Sullivan regarding his application, I mean rezone?
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, I'd like to ask some questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wishman.
Brian, do we know what kind of quote-unquote light manufacturing is going to go on at this particular spot?
Oh, I'm not going to answer that, but the applicant's representative is here tonight, and she will be able to explain what this business is.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you.
Alright, would the applicant step forward, please? If you would state your name and address, for the record, we would appreciate that.
My name is Tina Wilson, and I'm with the Western Alliance for Economic Development, and I live at 158 South Streamleaf Avenue in Starr. I provide economic development services for the city of Emmett and Gem County, and this application is related to a project that is called Project ACES. And the type of manufacturing that will be going into this, into this building is computer parts. It's just a component of a computer. There will be 25 jobs created with this company coming in, and it doesn't happen all at once. Once the building is completed, there needs to be some tenant improvements made, and then the facility will have to go through a certification process for anywhere from eight to 10 months before they are certified into full production. But once they are certified as into full production, they will be manufacturing a component of computer hardware. This is a company that is relocating and has chosen the city of Emmett instead of going to someplace in Ada County or Pontiac County. They like your community and feel like they'd like to be a part of it.
Very good. Any questions from the commissioners or the applicant's representative? Thank you very much. So at this time, we will take any information. I thank you for coming in. We do have somebody from the public who did join us. Were you here for either of these applications to speak regarding these?
I'm interested in the ACES and the 50 hours of operation.
Okay, very good.
May I answer that?
Yes, please, come on up.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, they're a regular Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 business. The only traffic that comes through all of their components in and out come by UPS or FedEx, and that only happens during normal working hours. The companion application, do I speak to that?
You can speak a little bit to it.
So currently, the building has like a small apartment center, and the owners anticipate at least until construction and all of that is completed that maybe they might be on-site to manage the project. But the intention is that on that Monday through Friday, when they have people come in for the business in and out, that might stay overnight or occasionally in that. So initially, but that residential component's there and it's still a part of the building that is completed at this point in time. And so it's just about maintaining that original use. But it is a Monday through Friday business, 8 to 5, and so I hope I answered your question.
Actually, ma'am, what I'm going to have you do is step to the microphone so we can get those questions answered for you. If you would, yes, yes. So anytime that you respond or have questions about a permit that's invented or something that comes in front of the zoning commission, we would like to have all of that information recorded, the questions recorded, so that we've done our due diligence. So if you would state your name and your address into the microphone, that would be great.
My name is Joanne Waters, and my address is Fort Peters, Fort Judo Lane, right there. And the building, the additional building that is not there, I, I saw that, I know they had the dimension width and length, but I admit it was huge. It was like a pretty good size.
Is that necessary?
The second.
Yeah, I'll answer when you're done with any more questions.
Well, that was just another, other than your operation hours, that was a concern because mostly, not for me personally, but for the residents of the cottages and the apartments that are there, 15 feet from that, literally from that, from the building.
Fantastic. So what I'll have you do, if you will take a seat, and I will have Brian come up and respond to your question.
Well, I don't have an exact dimension. They gave me a site plan with a proposed future building on it, so they didn't give me any information on the size of the building, nothing like that. The maximum height in a commercial zone is 60 feet, the maximum height in a residential zone is 35 feet. I can't see them doing a two-story building. I mean, at the most, maybe a two-story building, but that's generally about the height of what's down there right now with the big cables. That's a two-story building that's sitting there. So I couldn't personally see them going any bigger than that. But I can't, I can't really tell off of the site plan.
Did that answer your question? Fantastic. Commissioners, did you have any additional questions for the applicant or for Brian regarding
I don't.
Alright. So just kind of to review, let's make sure that we understand what we are. Again, remember that this is something that we recommend to the city council, so this is a recommendation for approval. Okay? You should have the recommended motions shaped.
Got to close the public hearing before we go into that.
Yes, thank you. Alright. If there are no other questions for staff or for the applicant, I will go ahead and close the public hearing for RZ 20-001. Alright, so Commissioners, we need a motion, either for approval or for denial.
I recommend to approve this to the city council.
Fantastic. So Commissioner Wishman, do you have the recommended motion for the rezone listed in your paperwork? It should have been paged to. Will you just go ahead and read number 1 for me then? Speaking of that, would you like me to make the motion in time? Please, Commissioner Wishman.
Yeah, I guess maybe I might. My PDF is fine though.
Yeah, that's fine, please, if you would, the Commissioner's benefit, that'd be great.
I think I'd motion to recommend approval to city council application, RZ 20-001, in application to rezone 1420 Judo Lane from R1 single-family residential to C commercial, including adopting staff findings, analysis, and staff recommendations.
We now need a second for the motion.
All second.
Commissioner Frivos, seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. So now we will open the hearing for special use permit 20-003.
Okay, this special use permit is for the same property. It's a single-family residence in a commercial zone is what the special use permit application is for. File number is SUP 20-003. Owner is Veritas Holdings LLC. Property address is 1420 Judo Lane, Inglewood, Idaho, 83617. Application summary and overview: The applicant, Veritas Holdings LLC, requesting a special use permit, SUP, on their property located at 1420 Judo Lane, to allow a single-family residence in a commercial zone. The structure was built in 2018 to be used as a single-family residence with a tax garage. This is an allowed use in the current zone of the property. The owner has a companion application for a rezone of this property to change zoning from R1 single-family residential to C commercial, to use the existing structure's garage area as a light manufacturing facility and keep the remaining residential portion of the building a residential and office space. This type of use is encouraged as a live-work type of structure with a commercial use at the front of the building and residential use in the back. The owner has submitted a site plan that will be reviewed with the rezone of the property and must comply with the commercial zoning requirements. The property will have parking in the rear with landscape fluffers on the north and east side, which will include green space, trees, and plants. Now we're going to jump forward to number 5, Required Findings and Staff Analysis. Section 9-8-1, general standards in the special use chapter of the city of Emmett zoning ordinance state the following: The commission shall review the facts and circumstances of each proposed special use in terms of the following evidence showing that such use is of the proposed location. A will in fact constitute a special use as established on the official schedule of district regulations with a zoning district involved. Emmett City Code 9-5-2, official schedule of district regulations, this single-family dwelling has required a SUP in the commercial zone. Emmett City Code 9-7-5-U states, single-family and two-family residential uses are permitted in the C district on upper stories above ground floor non-residential use or ground floors behind storefront space or integrated into a mixed-use structure where design is consistent with the storefront character. The application is contingent on the rezone of the property. No plans are proposed to change the exterior appearance of the building. B will be harmonious with and in accordance with the general objectives or with any specific objective of the comprehensive plan and/or this zoning title. Staff finds the following comprehensive plan definition and zoning ordinance section apply to this application for a mixed-use building in the C commercial zone. Comprehensive plan, the land use category mixed plan development is defined as follows in the land use chapter in Gem Community Comprehensive Plan. These areas are unique in that they are accessible by archerials and/or rail lines and/or the airport. These areas are greatly affected by contiguous industrial, residential, and commercial land uses. In order that compatible land uses and efficient uses of the land might occur, these lands are anticipated for a variety of planned compatible excuses. Probable mixed uses for these areas could be commercial, multifamily residential, open space uses as means to buffer highway noise, light industrial, office, public, and related land uses. Heavy industrial uses are not envisioned as part of the mixed plan use area. Single-family uses are only allowed through the special use permit process. This section of the comprehensive plan supports residential uses in a commercial zone with an SUP. Staff identified no other policies in the comprehensive plan that pertained to this type of application. Title IX, Zoning Regulations. Staff finds the following section of Title IX apply to this application. Commission must find the application is either in accordance with these provisions or they do not apply, then the application can be approved. Emmett City Code 952, Schedule of Zoning Regulations, single-family as permitted with a special use permit in the C zone. This section allows for residential use in the commercial zone with an SUP. The applicant is proposing to continue to use the residential portion of the existing building if the rezone application is approved. The commission must address all the required SUP findings. If all findings have been made in the positive, the application must be approved. Emmett City Code 975-U, single-family and two-family dwellings in the C district states, single-family and two-family residential uses are permitted on the upper stories above ground floor resident, non-residential use or ground floors behind storefront space or integrated into a mixed-use structure where design is consistent with the storefront character. Based on this ordinance section, the application will comply as the residential use is behind the commercial use. Emmett City Code 9-11-2, .8.1, standards for parking, requires parking spaces for all these types of residential uses to be located on the same lots as the use they are intended to serve. The rear portion of the lot offers or provides off-street parking for not, for residential and commercial use. Emmett City Code 9-11-4, parking space requirements, states that all single-family dwellings are required to provide one off-street parking space for each unit. Off-street parking space is required to be at least nine feet wide by 19 feet long. The lot has enough length and area to allow for this parking. C will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity unless such use will not change the essential character of the same area. The general vicinity is comprised of a mix of residential and commercial uses. See Section 4 for more detail. Because the applicant is not asking to change- Because the applicant is not asking to change the exterior appearance of the property, staff finds the proposed use and appearance to be harmonious and appropriate with the existing mixed-use nature of the vicinity. D will not be hazardous or disturbing to existing or futureing neighboring uses. Staff finds the proposed residential use will not be hazardous or disturbing to the neighboring uses. E will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police, and fire protection, drainage structures, refuse disposal, water in sewer, and schools, or that the persons or agencies responsible for the establishment of the proposed use shall be able to provide adequately any such services. Staff finds that the subject property at 1420 Judah Lane is currently served by water in sewer, Emmett sanitation, police, fire, and schools. Adding the residential activities should not have any negative impact on the services. Emmett Public Works had no comment on that part of the application. F will not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. That finds that there will be no public cost for public facilities and services that are not already being provided to the property. G will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment, and conditions or operation that will be detrimental to any person, property, or the general welfare because of excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glare, or odors. That finds that residential use would not involve activities that would be detrimental to neighboring properties. H will have vehicular approaches to the property which shall be so designed as not to create interference with traffic on surrounding public thoroughfares. That finds a vehicular approach used for the residential and commercial use will be off Judah Lane, which is the existing access. And I will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of natural, scenic, or historic features of major importance. That finds the site is not located in an area encouraged for preservation or known to be of specific importance as to the natural, scenic, or historic features. And six, staff recommendation. That finds that a proposed special use permit by Veritas Holdings LLC meets all the required findings from the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan listed in section five of this report. Based on the information presented today and available to staff, we recommend approval of this application.
Thank you, Brian. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Mr. Sullivan? If no, then at this time, we will hear from the applicant again, or the applicant's representative. And again, please state your name and address for the recording.
Tina Wilson with the Western Alliance for Economic Development, 158 South Street, Leith, Star. As I mentioned in the previous hearing, the intention is the owners will be there onsite for project management until they are able to get that up and ready. And then, once the construction and the certification is passed, then it would be just used for, would be their customers maybe coming in for a night or two to check out the facilities or for sales needs. So other than that, it's not... So I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant's representative? Okay, thank you. Anything from the public? Okay. No on that one? So at this time, commissioners... Okay. So at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for special use permit SUP20-003. All right. All right, now we need to form the motion. Madam Chairman? Commissioner Butler?
I make a motion to approve application number SUP20-003 in application to allow residential living in a C commercial zone. We have the building located at 1420 Judah Lane, which is part of a companion app for a rezone without the findings, staff analysis, and staff recommendations.
Thank you for the motion. Would somebody please second the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Jennifer, for seconding the motion. At this time, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Motion is approved. This will be, the application is approved. All right, at this time, we will, we have new business.
Good evening again. So tonight, we have election of officers on the agenda. So currently, we have Commissioner Earls, serves as the chairman, and Commissioner Butler serves as the vice chair. So what we're looking is to elect new officials, whether you want new ones or you want to keep what we have. But we do have to have an action on this. We have to make a motion of who you'd like to see running the show. So we have to open it up to a motion, basically, and then vote on that motion, and then continue on.
I would move to keep our same staff this year due to everything that was going on.
Thank you, Commissioner Wishman. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Freebo, section, seconds? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
True.
Fantastic. So we have elected officers. We are going to say as we currently are. Perfect. So do we have any unfinished business? Items from the commission? Items from the building administrator?
Nothing.
Nothing? Yay. Nothing on the horizon for the rest of this year?
I do not have any more applications, no. But I do have a, I have something I'll probably bring next month. We need to have a meeting in December because we missed quite a few meetings this year. So we do need to have the December meeting.
Fantastic. So that brings us to our last action item, which is, the next meeting is December 7, 2020. Is this something that needs to be approved?
Oh, that on the...
Yes.
No, it doesn't have to be.
Oh, yeah, on the...
It doesn't have to be an action item. I'm just supposed to pick that up.
Oh, sorry, okay. Sorry, Commissioner Wishman, what were you saying?
Oh, yeah, on the December meeting this year.
Yeah, Brian was saying that we've missed too many meetings and that he has some things that he will bring for us, but it won't necessarily be an applicant, an application process or anything like that. So anyways... All right, so if there's nothing else, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting for this evening. We are officially done. Thank you. You guys have a great rest of your evening.
Very good, everybody have a good night.
Hey.
I share having a date is what I'm seeing. I gotta write the paper.
Fantastic, November 8th?
No, it's December, so I gotta advertise it here.
That is, I think you started right.
First meeting that I can...
Isn't that awesome?
In 14 days. With the last meeting in March, I can't make it to the 15th.
Oh, okay. Exactly, awesome. A motion and then...
I mean, and that's easy enough that if we need to modify something like that.
Yeah, we're simply fine.
We could, at least we have the basis. And it'll get us in practice and...
Right.
Well, everyone else, you talk to me about it. We gotta have a sit-down with Grant. We gotta go to one of the...
How are you doing, Dorian? I was leaving there, it's a Monday.
What's going on?
You, Jennifer?
I know, it's been forever.
Well, we can check on tomorrow.
Yeah, let me know when that's what they say.
Yeah.
I can't help that things, that there's a lot to be done.
Oh, yeah.
They want to be able to, they want to move everything up to January.
Yeah, by the end of December, they need to bust them right now. And then there's concrete on the outside that has to be done for tile movements. So they need to get asphalt, I don't know if they're even getting paint. We can bond, that type of stuff, due to weather.
Yeah.
Well, it'll be like tomorrow, I'll look and see what we're doing.
I know. I'm finishing, I do. She's tired of supporting her informator. So she's taking a break. Yeah, it is. That's the end of the integration. And we do all the...
Congratulations, congratulations.
I'm excited for you.
I'm so excited. That's why I said, huh?
You're just gonna live in here.
Eleven more days.
Okay. She can afford to be in this. Right?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you for coming. Oh, well, good. Everybody can wish you happy birthday.
Yeah.
See ya.
All right, see you Wednesday.
See you.
Can I go out this door?
Yes, you can.
Okay, yay.
Yeah, thank you. It's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna work.
Bye, Brian. See you Wednesday.
Thank you.
What's up today? Meet Wednesday.
Okay, perfect. Perfect, perfect. And I'll be available on Wednesday.
I need you.
The pool?
No, not the pool.
The park itself? I don't know where to look.
Okay.
I don't guarantee they're there. Yeah, I ain't gonna look.
I don't know whether the park was...
Yeah, I don't. I never had to look for something like that, so I...
So take a look. So you can find it really helpful. It does. I don't want to actually do the title files.
Right.
Yeah, but I do, I do... Yeah, so it was kind of the defense.
The original park. Yeah.
Yeah.
It might take some work, I don't know.
So I don't know where to even start.
You know, I've read a billion minutes and I've seen somewhere in there where I haven't given to this thing. I don't know about if it's been repeated to this thing. I'm sure they're a transfer, they're a transfer motor. Yeah. Okay. Well, I know where to go to other than that. Then I can...
The sooner we find out that you can find it or not.
Right.
I can't find it, so I got a glass of beer out.
Yeah, I'll check our safe, which tomorrow. And then I'll come back to county and assess the office and see if they have something showing.
You know, we...
That'd be great.
Yeah. All right, Dana, thank you.
In a heartbeat. I'm gonna do my due diligence and try to lose weight on my own, but...
I will tell you, with gastric sleeve, you lose just what you want to lose and you just adjust by how much you eat. And it's not as invasive as a gastric bypass. So gastric sleeve is really just a little... Yeah, they actually just take out the lobe of your stomach and you just do a little tooth, but you're, it's not, you'll have complications with it. So that should be with gastric bypass.
Yes.
Yeah, I hope that's access to food in my stomach. And I mean, people can stretch it out. I mean, some people have, and you have to be bypassed, but... Exactly, exactly. And it's a heck of a lot cheaper. All right, guys, have a wonderful evening and I'll see you in December unless you need...
I got the other one.
I only had only one public, but I need, guess I could listen to it. There you go. Okay, let me just triple-check and make sure I didn't, uh, forget.
Well, I gotta shut this down.
Oh, yeah, I need your cell phone.
Your cell phone? We got, shut that down? Now I gotta shut that down.
Every single time that I need to do SharePoint on one of the laptops, it always doesn't let me.